So, good morning, everybody. I want to welcome you to the May 2nd, 2023, meeting of the Calver County Board of Commissioners. This time, I want to ask Father Beal if he would come forward and give us an invocation.
Good morning. I'm Father Nathan Bell. I'm rector at Middleham and St. Peter's Episcopal Parish in Calvert County, and thank you for having me give the invocation this morning.
Thank you. Thank you. Good morning.
Let us pray. Almighty God, who has given us this good land for our heritage, we humbly beseech thee that we may always prove ourselves a people mindful of thy favor and glad to do thy will. Bless our land with honorable industry, sound learning, and pure manners. Save us from violence, discord, and confusion, from pride and arrogance, and from every evil way. Defend our liberties and fashion into one united people, the multitudes brought hither out of many kindreds and tongues, and do with the spirit of wisdom those to whom in thy name we entrust the authority of government, that there may be justice and peace at home, and that through obedience to thy law, we may show forth thy praise among the nations of the earth. In the time of prosperity, fill our hearts with thankfulness, and in the day of trouble, suffer not our trust in thee to fail, all which we ask through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Let me just to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, good morning. That brings us to agenda. Is there any changes to the agenda as presented?
I have none.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Have a motion, have a motion and a second that we approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion curious. I do have some public safety announcements this morning, in fact, quite a few. Unfortunately, this morning, we have to send our condolences out to the North Beach Volunteer Fire Department and the family of Matt Mad Dog Weber, president of the North Beach Volunteer Fire Department, who passed away suddenly last week. I have to admit, when I first got word that Matt Weber had passed from North Beach Volunteer Department, I thought, I should know Matt Weber. And then until somebody said Mad Dog, I didn't put the two together because I only knew Mad Dog. Mad Dog was a great guy, gave a lot of his life to the volunteer fire department there in North Beach, and we certainly want to pass along our condolences to not only his real family, but his fire department family at North Beach. And farmers market season started last week with the farmers market opening at Calvert Health, and that farmers market operates every Tuesday afternoon. Also, next Saturday on May 6th, live at Linda's Premiers on Calvert Broadcast, and it's a partnership with the Linda L. Kelly Animal Shelter, and they're going to bring your animals that are up for adoption on a bi-weekly talk show and talk about local lovable animals in need of forever homes. So if you're looking for a family friend, that's a perfect place to go. Correct, Commissioner Hart?
Absolutely, absolutely.
May is also Mental Health Awareness Month. Unfortunately, this morning, we had a suicide in Solomon's from a non-county resident, but unfortunately decided to take his life here in Calvert. Mental health awareness is a significant issue, and we have lots of resources in the county. If you have issues or know if someone has some issues, please reach out. There are lots of resources to support those individuals. And last but not least, May is also Brain Tumor Awareness Month, so we want to support those families that are working through those issues. And that completes my public service announcements for this meeting. That takes us to proclamations. Our first proclamation this morning is for National Economic Development Week. Commissioner Hart?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Good morning. Do we have someone here? Ms. Julie, you want to start us off?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Economic Development Week was started in 2016 by the International Economic Development Council, which is the largest international professional trade association for economic developers to help increase awareness for local programs that create jobs, advance career development opportunities, and improve the quality of life in communities everywhere. Our office has joined hundreds of economic development organizations around the country to celebrate this special week and the work that we do and recognize the contributions made by professional economic developers to create more economically vibrant and livable communities. During the second week of May, we will also continue our tradition of utilizing this opportunity to increase awareness of economic developments, contributions to Calvert County by acting as a catalyst to increase our commercial tax base, generate jobs, retain business, stimulate industrial and commercial growth, and increase visitors to our county. So we celebrate Business Appreciation Week, the same week, with our local business community, our community resource partners, stakeholders, and dignitaries to further highlight our commitment to the local business community. And on behalf of our team, I would like to thank you for your support, and we look forward to celebrating National Economic Development Week and Business Appreciation Week, and we have our entire team here today. So if I could, I'm Julie Oberg, Director of Economic Development. I'm sorry, I forgot to say that today. And if I could ask my team to come forward, introduce themselves?
Please, please.
Okay, thank you very much.
Come on up, ladies.
Good morning.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning. Shiva Smith, Deputy Director.
Good morning. I'm Kathy McAdams, Business Retention Specialist.
Good morning. I'm Nicole White, Business Development Specialist.
Good morning. I'm Caroline Trossback, Agricultural Development Specialist.
Don't worry about us.
Good morning. I'm Hillary Daly. I'm a tourism specialist.
Good morning. I'm Grace Fadeley. I'm the Business Programs Assistant.
I gotta bring it down.
Ashley Greeley, the Special Projects Manager.
Good morning. Kiko Nash, Federal Grants Coordinator.
Good morning. Sarah Fraid, Tourism and Agriculture Program Assistant.
Julie, is that everybody?
We have two more members of our team, but they are answering our phones and making sure that everything's running smoothly, so.
So before I read this, you know, you guys really got the test with COVID. Didn't know who was going to be open, who wasn't, you know, and local business really took the hit, small business, you know. Costco, never seen better days, you know, I mean, they, you know, but the small business, I had so many people walk up to me in the grocery store thanking me for you guys because they had never experienced anything like that before in aid to keep those employees, you know, with a paycheck and to, you know, I mean, because, you know, working is pride, right? You know, to be able to, to know that, you know, you pay your own way, you're, you know, there's so much with it, and that just made it tough. So it was a very rough time, and hopefully those are in the past, and hopefully have a good season with the local farmers markets and everything else like that. So I'm going to read this, and once again, like I say, the work that you do, trust me, it, it, it's out there. I mean, they, they, they notice it, and I don't know if they tell you, but we hear it. So thank you. Whereas the week of May 8th through 12th, 2023, has been designated National Economic Development Week by the International Economic Development Council, and whereas National Economic Development Week was created to increase awareness of local programs and services that create jobs, advance career development opportunities, and increase the quality of life amongst our communities. And whereas Calvert County's Department of Economic Development promotes economic well-being and standards for our community by creating, retaining, and expanding jobs that facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base. And whereas Calvert County is committed to providing a Department of Economic Development that serves as a Mecca for businesses dedicated to delivering local, state, and federal resources to enhance competitiveness of our community and contribute to our economic growth and vitality. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County that the week of May 8th through 12th be known as National Economic Development Week in Calvert County to remind individuals of the importance of this community celebration, which supports the expansion of career opportunities and improves the welfare of all citizens. Be it further proclaimed that we encourage citizens to recognize the contributions of economic development organizations and the importance of building and maintaining a robust economy, given under our hands and seal the second day of May 23, signed by all five commissioners. Okay. Here we go. And, one, two, three, one more, one, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not a man in a bunch. Has there ever been a man in a bunch?
Thank you.
That, that, that's why I run so. That's why I run so well.
The next proclamation this morning is for Water Safety Month. Commissioner Rosso.
Do we have anybody who could come up and speak? Anybody representing?
Good morning, Commissioners. Brooke Barco, Aquatic Division Chief. So we are here today to recognize Water Safety Month. Each day, the United States loses an average of 10 individuals due to drowning, which is not something that we want to continue down that path. And a way to correct that is swim lessons. So swim lessons do have the ability to decrease the percentage of drowning up to 88%, which is a huge number, and that is done through our talented water safety instructor staff, some of which are here with me today. So they play an important part of educating and providing the necessary tools to individuals to help save their lives in the water. And we also would like to recognize our social media posts that will be going out for Water Safety Month. So our aquatics team has put together a few educational components, tips and tricks, things to keep in mind when you're in or around the water to stay safe. So they will be scattered throughout social media all month. So we would like to thank you for recognizing May as Water Safety Month, and I would like to invite some of my team up here to introduce themselves.
Hi, good morning. I'm Marah Sofos, the Aquatics Coordinator.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Zachary Bricky. I am the Acting Facility Manager.
Good morning. Sharon Hudson, Office Specialist.
Good morning. I'm Gaylan Krennic. I'm one of our swim supervisors, and I just want to say that we have a wonderful swim program, and we teach a lot of people how to be comfortable and safe in the water.
Good morning. I'm Teresa Barth. I am a water safety instructor as well as a swim lesson supervisor.
Good morning. I'm Stephanie Dalton. I am a water safety instructor and teach adaptive and preschool and everybody in between.
Good morning. My name is Candy Spain, and I would like to say, you see the four of us as instructors, I'm also a supervisor, but we're a very diverse group. We have high school students, up to all of us. So if you ever come, they're male, female, you know, we are a diverse group of instructors.
And Candy was my swim, swim instructor when I was a kid.
Well, I want to thank all of you. Is this on? Yes. I want to thank all of you for being here today, living in a peninsula. Many people who live on water, who have pools, it's imperative that the kids and the adults, I'm not, I'm not the strongest swimmer, but we made sure that our children had swim lessons. Their grandparents lived on the Chesapeake Bay, and we had a pool, and I had all kinds of pool rules, and they bogged at them, they thought I was ridiculous, but they made it to adulthood, and I've got seven grandchildren who we, we taught the same way, so it's very, very important. And also, swimming is so good for your body. It's not stressful on your joints, it's excellent exercise. Doctors recommend it tremendously. So thank you all for what you do. Okay, we'll read the proclamation. Whereas the state of Maryland and Calvert County, Maryland recognizes that water is an incentive, is an essential resource that sustains life and provides recreational opportunities for our community. And whereas swimming and aquatic-related activities play a vital role in maintaining good physical and mental health while enhancing quality of life. And whereas every person has a responsibility to be knowledgeable about water safety and take the necessary precautions to prevent water-related accidents. And whereas drowning is a preventable tragedy that affects thousands of individuals and families each year. And whereas Water Safety Month recognizes the ongoing effort and commitment of the pool, spa, water park, recreation, and park industries to educate the public on pool and spa safety issues and initiatives. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Calvert County that May is recognized as Water Safety Month in Calvert County. Be it further proclaimed that we urge our citizens to learn and practice proper water safety in order to protect and save lives, given under our hands and seal the second day of May 2023, signed by all five county commissioners. Thank you.
Can we get you to scoot in a little bit on the side? Here we go. One, two, three, one, two, three. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies.
How many questions?
I have a question.
I've heard stories like that where people just like.
Oh, yeah.
They think they're literally sink or swim.
Normally, they swim. I did the same thing to Zach and was like, what are you doing? I was like, oh, Pop told me. That's right. Morning. How you doing? How's Wade? I know, I do. You ain't got to tell me. Thank you.
So that brings us to National Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month.
So who do we have here for, if you'd come forward and please introduce yourselves?
White and gritty here.
Morning, everybody. Thanks for having us here.
Morning.
My name's Bob Spanberg, Jr. I'm the Chairman of the Board of A Beta Maryland Motorcycle Rights Organization in our 49th year of operation with offices in Annapolis. Main purpose of our organization is to enhance motorcycling as a sport and experience and way of life, everybody. We're concerned with safety, enjoyment, and affordability of motorcycling. And I won't get into, way off into the weeds on this, but there's a lot of people that seem they, they, they want to do away with internal combustion engines, which therefore pretty much would probably end the enjoyment and affordability of motorcycling for most of us. Our main concern is we spend a lot of time in Annapolis trying to help draft and promote legislation that, that makes the highway safer for, for everybody, especially motorcyclists, since that is really our way of life, and we appreciate you all doing this today. Thank you. I have two colleagues with me here. Would you talk about your, like, top three concerns as a motorcyclist, traveling backroads or traveling the roads in, in the state of Maryland? Actually, there's, this isn't, this isn't a primary concern, but this is something that a couple of counties have, have addressed, is people blowing debris from cutting, cutting grass in fields and, you know, out into the road. Makes it pretty dangerous for motorcycles, and motors in general, really, but that's something we've, we've attempted to address on a state level, and it's kind of, it doesn't get too much traction, sadly. There are a few counties that have actually introduced it and had legislation passed. I've seen several public service announcements on that recently, so it is. Hopefully, that will help. Another thing that we've been addressing for, I've been in this organization for 36 years, and we've been addressing this for, for a long time, is, and most people aren't aware of this, but if you're involved in an accident that, that results in a fatality, you don't automatically have to appear in court. You can pay a fine, prepay a fine, go on about your business, which I think is, I think is terrible. I thought, I actually thought we were going to get this legislation passed this year, and I talked to, talked to Chairman Clippinger of the Judiciary Proceedings Committee in the House, and he, he had a number of, that's the first time I've ever actually had, had the opportunity to talk to him at length about it, but that's something we're going to continue to try and make. I have a neighbor, I've lived down here in Port Republic, I have a neighbor who was killed in her own bed with her three children in the car, girl across the center line, killed her instantly, and they gave that girl a $55 ticket, sent her down the road, and I was in, and I see her children every day. All right, you want to come forward, and you have someone else wants to come up?
Morning, Council. My name is Terry Hurley, former legislative representative for A Beta Maryland. I'm a life member. I joined A Beta in 1978 when I was released from the Navy, and been fighting for motorcycle rights ever since then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Ken Sawyer. I'm the Executive Direct, Assistant Executive Director of A Beta Maryland, and also the Calvert County Director. I thank you for the opportunity to come in today, and I appreciate you putting out the proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you. I actually worked with A Beta for several years with the Calver County Traffic Safety Council. I'm very familiar with what you guys do, and thank you for doing what you do. I want to read the proclamation. Whereas, safety is our highest priority for the streets and roadways in our county, and whereas Calvert County is proud to be a supporter of motorcycle safety, education, and awareness. And whereas motorcycles are a common and economical means of transportation that reduces fuel consumption and road wear, contributes in a significant way to the relief of traffic and parking and congestion. And whereas, it is especially meaningful that the citizens of our county and state be aware of motorcycles on our roadways and recognize the importance of motorcycle safety. And whereas members of A Beta of Calvert County continually promote motorcycle safety, excuse me, education and awareness to the general public in our county and state. And whereas all roadway users should unite in the safe sharing of the roads in Calvert County and throughout Maryland. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Calver County Commissioners of Calver County that the month of May 2023 be known as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month in Calver County. Be it further proclaimed that we urge all drivers and members of our community collaborate to enhance safety and awareness on our roads, signed by all five county commissioners. Thank you.
There we go. And one, two, three, one more, one, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good question. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. They teach us.
We don't wait on the press.
Thank you. Thank you. They teach us people to look for your dogs on the road, too.
Well, we got those roads in the state of Maryland, Calver County.
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
So the first time I ran, I was in the North Beach Christmas parade, and I was right behind you guys, and you all talked about it that day.
Yes.
We do have an ordinance. You can't throw your grass or your leaves in the road, so.
Doesn't force it all the way.
We do make that public announcement to remind people that it's dangerous, not just for motorcycles or for others, but especially for motorcycles.
Everybody.
Absolutely. Y'all have a great day.
Thank you.
So now that brings us to appointments. Deputy Administrator Vasallo.
Good morning, Commissioners. Linda Vasallo, Deputy Administrator. You have two appointments this morning. The first one is for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and staff is requesting that you appoint Judith Peterson to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. You'll have no recre, no vacancies following that appointment.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second that we appoint Judith Peters, Peterson, excuse me, to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion curious.
All right, your second appointment is for the Employee Recognition Committee, and staff is requesting that the board appoint Laura Kent and reappoint Sharon Hudson and Christine Lewis to the ERC. Following that appointment, they will bring you back two nominations for the two vacancies remaining.
Move to approve.
So I have a motion and a second that we appoint Laura Kent and reappoint Sharon Hudson and Christine Lewis to the Employee Recognition Committee. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion curious. Thank you, Linda. So that brings us to the consent agenda, and we do have, as soon as I get my list, three items under consent today. Item one is Department of Human Resources Local Government Insurance Trust, LGIT, sponsorship request for the Calver County Board of Library Trustees and the Tri-County Council for Southern Maryland. Item two, Department of Human Resources, Calver County Administrative Charging Committee Rules of Procedure. And item three, Department of Technology Services, changes to Calver County Acceptable Use Policy. Are there any objections to those items listed under consent?
I have none.
Nope. Hearing none, those items will be adopted as presented. That takes us to new business. Item one, Department of Public Safety. Morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning, guys.
Morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jim Richardson, Division Chief for Fire Rescue EMS Department of Public Safety. If we, I'd like to dispense with reading the memo and go ahead and turn it over to my colleagues to begin the presentation. That's okay?
Certainly. Morning, gentlemen. Want to introduce yourselves and?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Monty Parks, Operations Specialist for the Department of Public Safety Fire Rescue EMS Division. With me today is Mikey Clark, Assistant Chief with the Huntington Volunteer Fire Department and Rescue Squad. He's also Chairman of the Calver County Chiefs Council. Brent Langford, Chief of the St. Leonard Volunteer Fire Department Rescue Squad, and Mike Farrell, Firefighter, EMT with Huntington Volunteer Fire Department Rescue Squad. First, I'd like to thank you for showing interest in these lithium-ion batteries. By the end of this work session, we hope you have an understanding of the batteries, as well as the dangers that come along with them. With that, I'll turn it over to you.
Good morning. Nice to be here today with you guys. Again, my name is Mike Farrell with the Huntington Volunteer Fire Department. And I'm just gonna walk you through a pretty comprehensive understanding of lithium-ion batteries, where they came from, where they're at in our community, and what kind of risks that it poses. It is a fairly consolidated report. Certainly, if you want additional time and more information on this, we can certainly provide that for you. So some of the things we'll be going over this morning is just explain some of the general understandings of the rechargeable lithium-ion battery. We'll determine some of the sequence events where this actually becomes an emergency. We'll present some operational procedures. Chief Langford will be taking you through how the fire department will respond in there to these lithium-ion batteries and some of the challenges that provides or presents itself to the fire department. And then certainly illustrate going forward, what do we need to manage this risk in Calver County? So the first thing I wanna take you through is why use lithium-ion batteries? So everything I have here is basically compared against your sulfuric acid battery, your car battery that has been an energy storage system up to this point. Just a little bit of history, the lithium-ion battery was actually created back in nineteen eighty-five, and it was actually in production in nineteen ninety-one by the Sony Company. Through some technological advancements and things like that, it does last longer. It will provide an energy source for a longer period of time compared to that sulfur or sulfuric acid battery. It has a higher power density, which means it provides more energy for whatever it's trying to operate. And it certainly has a longer life expectancy, and it has a lighter package. So it adds, it actually subtracts a lot of that added weight to that device that you're trying to push, pull, or power to. So when we get into the actual emergency, it's very important to understand how this battery works. So I'm gonna kinda break this down very simplistic for you. It's just a general lithium-ion rechargeable cell. And you have an anode and a cathode, and that's how that energy is actually passing those lithium-ion particles through that electrolyte, which is in the middle of that picture. That electrolyte is what's causing the problem. In the middle of that electrolyte, you have a separator, and that separator's job is to keep that cathode and ion separated, but it also stabilizes that battery. And if that separator becomes compromised, or what we call battery insult, which I will give you some demonstrations of exactly what battery insult is, it's causing these problems. When that separator starts to fail, that's when the battery starts to become unstable, and that's when we can actually have an emergency. Also, the understanding that that electrolyte is actually a liquid material, and that liquid material is a hydrocarbon base, which means it is flammable. So when that starts to heat up, that liquid will actually yield a gas, which is a flammable, highly toxic gas, and that's what's igniting, that's what's causing the emergency. And as that burns, that liquid continues to convert to a gas, which continues to feed the fire. When we look at this, and I'll show you how these individual cells are packed inside there, these modules have several of these cells inside them. And here's just some of the examples of the different technology that is being used in the commercial industry. I'll just kinda start up at the top right corner there, that prismatic. You've probably seen this in your rechargeable your cameras and things like that, if you ever have to actually pop that out and put it in a charger. It's a fairly small hardened shape, and what they're doing is they're actually wrapping that lithium-ion technology inside there nice and tight. Then at the bottom right corner, you have the pouch. That's very common in a lot of your electronics, very thin. These are actually used a great deal in cell phones, your laptops, things like that. But as technology is advancing, this lithium-ion technology is yielding where they're actually using these pouch concept in a lot of your much larger apparatus vehicles, things like that, they're seeing pouch technology. Then, of course, your button cell itself, button cell very common in a lot of your medical equipment, things like that, pacemakers, you'd find these in key fobs, our electronic key starts like we have for keyless vehicles, things like that. And then finally, I take you to the top left corner, which is a cylindrical, very similar to, a little bit bigger than a AA battery is what you would see. And then again, they're all made primarily the same. It's the same technology. It's really in the packaging that separates those different examples. So let's take a look at it. Those cells, when you put them together, they form a module. Now, that module typically will then be put into a pack, which then will be put into a device, for example, like a vehicle, or an energy storage system and things like that. There will be packs in there, again, breaking in there. The module itself, which is interesting, is because there's such a need and demand of this, that's where the value is, and that's where the dollar amount is. So there's a lot of companies that are building these, maybe not as safe, a lot of aftermarket products and things like that. So there's an actual electronic module on that battery module that prevents it from being overcharged, undercharged, things like that. So you can get a lot of these aftermarkets that are out there for consumption. You can actually get a minute where they'll actually, to save money, remove that modular off. So now it is unsafe, but it's being sold as a commodity for people to use, and people think they're saving money, you know, 'cause there is a lot of cost associated to this. This kind of technology actually had a lot of it wasn't as attractive because back in the early nineties, even the early two thousands, if your pack went down, you had to replace the whole pack. Well, now they're actually finding with the technological advancements, they can go in there and test the individual cells and subtract those cells out of that module, replace those, and put those right back into place.
So sir, let me ask you, is there any way the consumer would know they're purchasing that product? Is it marked?
Chances are no. Chances are no. So it's kinda buyer beware.
And I'm assuming with this technology being so fast, this typical government's way behind the curve, so there's no
Yes, sir. Yeah, there is.
Maybe regulations on?
There is a lot of regulation, and if you look at some of the regulations, you'll see it's subpart A, subpart B, subsort C. So as they're finding these issues and they're trying to address them, you can see that they're well behind the power curve based on that supply and demand need. So, oop. Let me go back one. All right, so, first day on the job. So here we have here just some examples of where is this at in our community? I mean, I get it, here in Calver County, I just broke them down into transportation, energy storage, and an expanding market of consumer electronic devices and things. So if we look in the top left corner, golf carts, buses for public transportation, your wheelchairs, even your e-bikes, that electronic bike actually will assist in moving that vehicle and things. And we're seeing this more in urban environments, where you're seeing the bike sharing program and things like that. Certainly, you could see that kind of, and people can buy those right off the market themselves and have that in their homes. The energy storage, so energy storage is becoming a very, very big market. And the concept is, is instead of using a combustible engine like a diesel generator, things like that, you actually are using the power grid to charge these batteries up. And then when there is a power failure of domestic power, these things click right on with no or any change in power to that area. We actually are seeing these, they're starting out in the West Coast, and they're starting to migrate this way. So these new developments are being constructed. One of the attractive ways to move with this builder is that they will have an energy storage system for that community. And they're very similar to about a C container, and there'll be individual modular packs of these lithium-ion batteries that just sit in there, and they'll usually plant like trees and stuff, so it's camouflaged, it's not an eyesore. So if any power's lost to that community, these things automatically kick right on. And you may not even realize that that's what's inside that container, is this energy storage system. Currently, there is no federal legislation, to my knowledge that I was able to find, where there's required extinguishing system integrated into there. So you have to be very aware through pre-planning and things like that, that they're in your community, and then they are, and then how we would extinguish them. There was a very serious incident, I can take you through in great detail at another time if you're interested, in Sunrise, Arizona, where one actually detonated, and several firefighters were severely injured from that emergency. And then the expanding market, and this is where we're seeing a lot of this, where you're seeing your wearable, your eye watches, your Apple watches, things like that, your Fitbits, smartphones, the lithium-ion rechargeable batteries probably in everyone's pocket. These consumer commodities, I would be very safe to say there's probably thousands of them just in the buildings right now, in these Calver County buildings, from cell phones to laptops to anything you can imagine. Toys are becoming more and more prevalent. I'm sure everyone saw the hoverboard and things like that, the e-bikes. They're moving up into more like a moped, if you will, kinda size, or scooter size, where we're seeing more and more of these. The cordless phone, and then, of course, the power tool. I'm sure all of us have lithium-ion rechargeable drills and saws and weed eaters and all that stuff plugged in probably right now, waiting to be used when we need them. And what I wanna show you is to understand how these things are actually gonna cause us problems, and that's where we move into thermal runaway. So this is what we call battery insult, and battery insult is basically something has caused some kind of physical stress to that battery. Again, like I stated earlier, that separator becomes compromised, and that electrolyte starts to heat up. And that cell that you see in the top left corner, one cell starts to actually heat up. And actually, that flammable hydrocarbon electrolyte will catch fire, and then that cell will catch fire. Well, those cells are packed in there very, very tight. So once one goes off, the next one will go off, and so on and so forth, to where you have a module, and then actually the entire pack. And that's where you're seeing that propagation, where it's continuing to burn out of control. So once one heats up, and that temperature starts to rise and starts to release that flammable and toxic gas, it's gonna ignite and continue so on and so forth. Just to give you an understanding of what that kinda looks like here, I was able to pull down some numbers for you just to put in contrast here. So what are you talking about? How fast is this occurring? So you're looking at a scientific study that was conducted, and they did this several times to get an average. And you're looking about zero to five seconds, one cell will actually go into thermal runaway, once it actually has that separator compromised. At five to twenty seconds, now six cells are in thermal runaway. And then at forty seconds, eighteen cells are now in thermal runaway. So you can see how exponentially this small incident starts to expand itself. And as these things begin thermal runaway, when you see that propagation up there, the temperatures that are coming off this is a thousand degrees. So sheet metal will actually fail at six hundred degrees, and steel starts to elongate at a thousand degrees. So this is very, very high temperature coming off here. So if this is around any kind of combustible materials, you can now see how you have rapid flame spread. So what I have here is, hopefully this will come up, I have a video here, and this is with a thermal imager, so that's why you see those different colors. And of course, the brighter the color, the hotter it is. And they're actually gonna take this battery pack and put it into thermal runaway, and you're gonna see how this thing is gonna start yielding heat, and it's gonna start throwing heated shrapnel and stuff like that. And that's the thing to be in mind, is that when this actually starts to go into thermal runaway, it starts to fragment, and it will actually propel heated cells away from the source. Again, so if it throws it across this room, anywhere it comes in contact, that thousand degrees is gonna start to connect up.
Full hearing hack anyone can use to improve their hearing almost overnight.
Wrong video.
Here we go. So they're actually causing this into thermal runaway, and you can see how violent this is. And all that you see coming off there is heated materials. So Chief Langford's gonna kinda take you through step by step from the fire department side, but I just really wanna focus again, like we talked about the temperatures itself, but also some of the toxic gases that are yielded from this. Hydrogen, highly flammable gas coming off this, carbon dioxide, carbon monoxide, even some of your acidic gases and things like that, you could actually find out there.
Sir, do they have stats on how often these are failing? I remember there was talk on planes with this stuff, and I remember we had a thing at work where one of our computers wasn't working. Of course, young guys know about all the stuff. He's like, you gotta unplug it. Like, what do you mean? He goes, it's heating up. Like, what do you mean it's heating up? We actually had this battery backup that came with it, so that it went down, it kicked on this, he's like, let it, unplug it, by tomorrow morning, it should cool down, and so is there?
So statistically, no. There is nothing where, the reality is, is that there are trillions of these being used throughout the world. It's just becoming more prevalent, and because of that supply and demand, you're finding producers that are being able to make these battery packs for a lower cost and start cutting corners. And I think that's where you're finding a lot of that causing issues. These batteries are being discharged and recharged every day. The problem is, it may be
Right now?
Yes, sir. Hundred percent.
Right now.
I have one in my pocket, so I'm with you. But the reality is, is that they are infrequent, but when they do occur, they are highly volatile and cause a tremendous amount of risk to that.
Excuse me, so within a home, and the chart that you had with everything that contains these battery packs, batteries, it can really help to ignite a fire and have it spread from room to room?
That is correct, ma'am. So there was a fire just recently in New York City where there were thirty-eight people that are displaced from an apartment building. And that's a huge concern for us, because a lot of times where these things are being charged is right at the front door. So if I have my e-scooter, and I ride it around, and I bring it in, typically, I don't wanna drag it all the way through the house, 'cause the tires are dirty, things like that. So I plug it right in by the front door. And then this battery pack goes into thermal runaway because it's been battery insult, whatever. And now, when it starts to do that process, we just saw, it's right by my means of egress to get out of the structure. And now I've actually compromised the entire structure, so all the other people that are occupied in that building.
Brett? Morning. Brent Langford, Chief, St. Leonard Volunteer Fire Department. See if I can operate this. So first and foremost, the fire department will always operate in a fundamental system. Regardless of the emergency, the unit will arrive on the scene of the emergency and immediately conduct life safety or lifesaving operations to control, confine, eliminate, and mitigate the threat to life property and the environment. So prior to an actual emergency being dispatched, there's a proactive approach to a lot of these things. First and foremost, as Mike had mentioned, pre-planning. So the first thing that we normally do as chiefs in the county is create standard operating guidelines to standardize a response throughout the county. That way, if there is a response, whether in Huntington, St. Leonard, anywhere in between or otherwise, that we understand what we're, not only responding to, but what resources are coming. We also plan on to just that we start working with the portions of the Calver County government to identify the target hazards that we currently have here in the county, and what could be potentially coming in the future. So I'd be working with like waste management to see where they store their the items down at the landfill or at the other waste facilities throughout the county, how they're storing it. Are they all together? As well as working with emergency communications to talk about when they get notification that there might be involving a battery fire, that they let us know, either through the CAD messaging or when we're dispatched for a call. And then we're working as well to talk with planning and zoning to see if there's anything that they're notified if someone's installing maybe battery packs into the house or a charging port for like a Tesla or another vehicle. Not sure the answer to that right now, but as the vehicles get bigger, they might require more, you know, battery draw, start going to tractors or, you know, other vehicles. The next proactive approach would be with education and training. So what we wanna focus on is a standardized, repeatable approach to training to ensure that all the responders receive the same type of training. This has already started in Calver County. Huntington Fire Department hosted an eight-hour lithium-ion battery emergency training March twenty-fifth that all departments were invited to. And then we also have vendor-specific training. So those would be such as Tesla being one vendor out there for cars, or if there's other vendors that come out, you would get that vendor-specific training. At St. Leonard, we hosted a vehicle vendor-specific training on February twenty-fifth. And then the other big thing, as Mike alluded to, would be education of the public at our open houses, education at community events to talk about, as these devices become more prevalent, where you should charge them, how you should charge them, and safety if there is an emergency prior to the fire department getting there. And then the last thing in the proactive approach would be equipment procurement. That would be where each fire department, or the fire department together, conduct market research on relevant equipment that may be implemented into the fire rescue operations. There's a couple of devices out there right now. Now, obviously, the market is getting bigger every year. So, and as there's more money in the market, you have people who develop other fire suppression systems, and this will change from year to year as the market becomes a bigger cost. Then we'll get into the response aspect of it. So as I alluded to before, our primary goal is life safety. So as I alluded to before, our primary goal is life safety. We arrive on the scene, if there's any life safety, that's the fir- our first goal. And second, it's gonna be containing the situation, and that will be dependent on what's involved. We, you guys spoke about on an airplane where they had, they actually have, looks like what you get your pizzas warmed up in, a container where you would throw an iPad or a phone in there and that'd be something very simple that you could mitigate that situation almost immediately. We start getting to the bigger vehicles, it becomes difficult or bigger batteries, it becomes very difficult. And that leads us to how we're gonna extinguish those bigger things. Because it's a battery fire, there's no risk for electrocution, so water is the best way to extinguish these fires. The problem is, is how much water it's gonna take to put the fire out and get to where the battery is because they are contained, as Mike said, and get in there and make sure that the fire, the fire is completely put out. There's been situations where fires have reignited hours and days after we've, where the fire departments have determined that they've been put out, as well as it, sometimes it takes thousands of gallons of water. It could be a prolonged situation where if you have a Tesla fire on the highway, you know, there could be roads shut down for three, four hours. And then after the situation's mitigated, we need to worry about overhaul and disposal of what was on fire. So if you have a vehicle, for example, and it's on fire, there's a potential, again, that it could catch fire hours or days later. So we need to work with the sheriff's department as well as the tow companies to make sure that regardless of the vehicle was even on fire, if it was involved in the accident, there's a potential for the puncture to the battery, that they need to store these vehicles and batteries away from anything other that could, could catch fire, would be other vehicles or buildings.
Chief, could you walk us through, talking about the response? You get a nine-one-one call, car's on fire inside the garage.
Yes, sir.
How do you mitigate this, keep your people safe? Can you kinda walk us through what, what would happen?
Sure. So at this point in time, it would be dispatched as a garage fire. And hopefully, working with the control center, we can get them to start asking those questions if they have any potential battery involvement with it, whether it just be a car or, you know, anything else. People tend to put their tools in their garage and, and the other batteries that Mike had alluded to earlier. One of the things with putting the fire out in this situation is, like I said, getting to it. So if the, let's say, for example, that the car caught on fire. A lot of times when these vehicles catch on fire, it's not just the battery on fire, it's the other material. So you've got the car seats, anything in the vehicle that was on fire and your situ- uh, your, the situation you've mentioned, it would be things in the garage on fire. So, you know, anything else that would be involved in there. Once we, we would obviously be on what we call our self-contained breathing apparatus, which would keep us safe and provide us with fresh air. And we would go in and put the fire out depending on if it was attached garage or detached garage.
Say it's enclosed. I mean, do you have the equipment to get that car out of there so the whole house doesn't, doesn't, 'cause that could be...
So the biggest thing would be to start putting the fire out. Now, one of the nice things is, is that it's difficult to get to the battery, but putting out the things that the battery's caught on fire is relatively easy to do. The prolonged period is, we do have the ability to use winches, others, other things to remove a car or even get a tow company or something that could come down and possibly do it for us as we are using the water to make sure that the vehicle stays cool. The biggest thing is to put out the fire itself. And again, it might not just be the car on fire, it could be other elements. And then once the car, the, the fire is actually out, getting to the battery itself and getting into those cells. That's what's gonna take the most amount of time. So once the fire's out, we probably would be able to knock all visible fire down. And then now we need to worry about just making sure that the vehicle itself stays cool. So it wouldn't be necessarily putting a lot of fire out, it'd be the prolonged aspect of getting into the battery pack, keeping it cool for, until our thermal imager showed that there's no longer any heat source that we can see that there's gonna be any more danger.
So if I'm watching this at home, I go, okay, they show up, they dump some water on it, blah, blah, blah. How much water? How long? 'Cause I hear nightmare stories about these things that it's not, do you even carry enough water in the truck to put this thing out?
So there is a, a device called the BEST device that is manufactured by Rosenbauer that will allow you to go in, it's kinda like a Ghostbusters when they slide it out and the tractor goes, but you slide this under the car, there, punctures the battery and then floods the battery cell with water.
Do we have those things?
We have, uh, St. Leonard's put in for a special project to get one of those after July one, when the new budget is approved. So we, we potentially will have one that could be used throughout the entire county after July one of this year. It's not a hundred percent effective because if you can't get to the exact cell that's on fire, or if the cells don't overlap, you might, it might take several punctures. But that will decrease the amount of water that's needed. But on a first, initial alarm, we're coming, what is being dispatched is you have upwards of twelve thousand gallons of water that will be coming to the scene, which is a very...
Is that enough?
Which is a very good start. It's hard to say...
Start.
It's, it's hard to say what will be enough because every fire and every emergency is different. Depends on the size of house, what's on fire, how big the vehicle is, how long it's been burning for, et cetera. Like I said, so if it's a, if, if the homeowner calls right away and it's right down the street from one of the fire stations and we get there right away, we might be able to mitigate that situation very quickly and put out what is visibly on fire. But then again, it's getting the hidden fire within the, within the battery itself. If it's a prolonged response because it's, you know, so the neighbor notices the garage on fire, then a lot of that water's gonna be to put out what was on fire when we arrived, not just cooling down and seeking the hidden fire within the battery itself. So each, each situation, it's hard to tell how much water we'll need, but we have a good start when getting there.
And you don't always know what you're walking into with these, these batteries. And also, if you, I understand the puncture, but does that let off harmful gases that is harmful to our firefighters? I mean, when it's burning or gases going around that you all could possibly get sick from?
Yes, ma'am. There's the potential for those gases. Now, I will say that every fire you go to which involves smoke or an I, what we call an IDLH environment, there is a potential to be exposed to dangerous gases. But our breathing apparatus, it's a positive pressure system. We do fit testing every year to make sure our masks of the firefighters fit correctly will help prevent us being exposed to those gases provided that we're wearing the app, the breathing apparatus the entire time. And in situations like these, 'cause a lot of those gases, after the smoke is gone, you can't see it, we'll be doing metering to make sure that if we are in an enclosed environment, that those gases aren't present. We might have to wear those breathing apparatus for an extended period of time.
So what about, 'cause Commissioner Grush has got a great point. What about if they're in a cul-de-sac and it goes on all the people there, do they have to evacuate?
It's, it potential, like, anything that would involve a hazmat situation would depend on the weather, the wind. I'll give you another example. There's a, you know, electronic vehicle charger or electronic vehicles can be in a parking garage in North Beach. That's an enclosed environment. I mean, you're potentially, you know, not only just a garage, it's might be smaller, but you have the ability to have these affect more than one vehicle or multiple people within an enclosed environment, citizens, not just the fire department.
So you did say you're working with planning and zoning on fire marshal, building codes, forge, the charging stations?
Yes, sir. So basically, after we were sort of charged with this project, it really opened our eyes to kinda the resources we wanna get into to start talking to the people to see if they can give us, you know, planning and zoning or, yeah, I'll let Monty speak to this.
Commissioners, I actually reached out to inspection and permits and had a discussion with Joe. And he's working on something that's gonna be very helpful to the fire departments in Calver County. There's been a significant increase in permits in electrical for these high voltage plugs, for these EV vehicles in garages. He's gonna get that information so that can be sent out to the department. So then responding to a fire at that house, they would then have something in front of them showing that they have a plug that could possibly have EV vehicle in that garage. So again, with you guys sparking this, we've reached out and that's in the works right now. So that'd be most helpful to the departments when we run these emergencies at houses.
And, and Monty, on these storage units for these solar farms or whatever, is there any distance that they have to be away from building restriction lines and other houses? And is that something we can put in planning and zoning ordinances to...
That would be a better question for inspection and permits. Commissioner, I'm not sure if there's any codes on that.
On that, County Attorney, didn't we have that discussion when the state of Maryland? Can you further some light about solar farms and, and what county's rates are?
John Norris County Attorney. Commissioner, there was legislation proposed in Annapolis this year that would have superseded any zoning regulation for a community generating size facility that got Public Service Commission approval. That bill, through the efforts of the Maryland Association of Counties and its county partners, was modified so that there is some recognition of the importance of following a comprehensive plan. But the trend is towards pushing solar into the rural communities to feed back into the urban areas and to do rooftop solar in urban areas.
So, so the law says that we can't stop them, but how much leverage do we have to put in safety guidelines to prohibit them from where they might be installed in relation to residential developments or...
So almost none, because most of that field is preempted. You do have some today, you do have some authority to amend your residential building code, your international building code, and your local electrical code. But that's dwindling as well.
So the only thing we could do is restrict future development surrounding a facility that might prevent significant danger concerns, but we can't prohibit the site from locating itself near those types of areas, correct?
For a community generating size facility, that's correct. But you also saw this year a bill that proposed when they're doing renovations to townhomes that there be a requirement that the renovated, renovation include street-side recharging stations.
So I think that what triggered this discussion today was last year at Mako, we had a presentation about mainly solar farms and the battery packs. And it was pretty enlightening to us, the dangers that are involved in those. And because of state legislation, there's not one thing we can do. And that triggered, at least I have a little bit of fire experience, and for you, knowledge of the scene before you arrive is extremely important. And I was concerned about you rolling up on a residence with an electric car in the garage, and maybe the fire hasn't extended into the garage yet, but you knowing that that car is there is important. And there's more and more solar rooftop being installed, and some of those have battery backups, and you need to know that. So I think that my first concern was what we can do to help you as far as signage or, you know, something so that you know when you roll up, there's a battery pack on the roof or in the backyard, or there's two Teslas in the garage, so that you have that information to make decisions on. So I think that was the path I was heading down, that working together, we figure out what we can do through planning and zoning for regulations for construction and signage to make sure you're aware of what you've got to deal with. Because we had a little discussion this morning, when you buy a Tesla, they're not telling you what this thing can do to you. Recently, there was a house fire in Virginia, was ignited by an electric bike. That gentleman had no idea when he parked his bike in his living room, it's gonna burn his house down. So we need to help you with your public awareness of, and we're not trying to stop people from buying electric cars or electric bikes, we just wanna make sure the public's aware that when you place these devices, 'cause you know, a laptop, laptop can set a fire. But as these batteries get bigger and bigger, the danger becomes exponential. And that, we wanna make sure our citizens are aware of they shouldn't, things they shouldn't do, like I said, and whatever we can do to help you so that you're aware of what's out there.
Mr. President, I, I think if it's possible, if we could get a work session, maybe county administrator could find us some expert from the state to speak to these solar farms. Because, you know, obviously, the rural areas, we always take the brunt of, the decisions get made in three jurisdictions and the other twenty-one are supposed to file suit. But we get it all. And if we have no say, then at least our citizens should have every piece of information that, will you destroy your property forever? Will you take a chance of harming your neighbors, everyone else? I mean, the verbiage that we're hearing is pretty scary. And so maybe we could get somebody from the state to actually come here. They're the ones that are, that are pushing this out there, that maybe they can defend it and tell us why it's such a good idea. I think would be fair to our people.
In our presentation at Mako, they talked about these solar farms and these batteries, as you showed, in C containers full of these batteries. And, 'cause I do have a little bit of experience, they, they compared it to a nuclear facility where you can't put it out, and your job is to evacuate everybody downwind as far as you think you should because of toxins in that smoke. And I had no idea until I heard that presentation. So that's why we're here today. And today's the first step. You know, your, your work's not done today, neither is ours. We may have more questions, but I don't wanna conclude.
No, they also talked about submerging tanks for vehicles and the costs associated with them and how you would go about implementing that as well. I guess that's something that the fire side's already looked at, I'm sure.
Are you talking about like getting a container and actually putting the vehicle in there? Yeah, we, we, we were doing our research, we had talked about, you know, sort of the best way. And that's something that they're doing in Europe a lot right now, is just getting, you know, those containers submerging in there. And that would be very time-intensive and resource taxing in order to have down here in Calver County.
But, but if we're gonna be all electric, ten years, you know, by the time the old combustion cars are gone, there's gonna be a point in time where every car or vehicle running down this road is electric, and it's gonna be a necessity for us, maybe not every department has one, but that we have some available, 'cause you can't put them out. And if they're going to trucks, you know, if I've got a truck, you, you think a Tesla is bad.
What about a school bus?
What's my trac- a tractor trailer? How big a battery is that thing gonna have to have? And it's running up and down the road every day, or tractors or bulldozers or whatever. So it's a minor problem now, but it's gonna be exponentially in the next twenty years.
And hopefully, as the popularity is forced to grow, that the extinguishing and the, the technology for that will, might not be on pace, but it'll be not too far behind it in order to determine how to, you know, best extinguish the vehicles.
And things that are gonna change, technology's gonna change. By the time we get there, there may be better equipment or preventive measures that you all can take to use to extinguish these things. But, you know, based on what we know today, trying to think ahead, it's something that we have to prepare for and adapt.
You know, it'd be my recommendation, as I was doing research on this, these energy storage systems that you're speaking of, they seem like they have a very good handle on that situation. They're usually pretty segregated from any kinda occupancy area. Some of them have integrated extinguishing systems, they're sealed up airtight. So if we, you know, you would move in on it, you, you can really slow it down, just like Chief Langford was saying. Our first priority's life safety. There's nobody in there, then just slow down. Now it's a property incident where we have to be concerned about, you know, the economical impact of that. The bigger concern is when you see that slide where I broke it down into consumer robotics, that's the concern. That's the concern because you can now buy cheaper lithium ion battery packs that have basically have, uh, they don't have all the safety incorporated into it, hence why it's cheaper. And now you're putting it into an apartment building, or you're putting it into a townhouse. And now instead of just one townhouse, these things are getting so violently and so out of control that now we have multiple structures involved.
You, you bring up a good point. So somebody's doing their work from home on their computer, and this thing's getting hot, and it starts to go, what do they do? 'Cause they're gonna be so caught off guard, I, I mean, you know, you just don't think of your computer exploding or...
Sure. I, I can, and YouTube is a great resource for this.
I mean, do they throw it in the sink and turn water on it?
So in most cases, they, they would suggest that you do that. But the problem is, sir, is that what it does is you'll hear a pop, and that is a safety relief where it's actually releasing that electrolyte has gone from a liquid to a gas. It's pressurized and you'll hear a pop. The next thing is you will see a white smoke, but that's actually a toxic flammable gas. The heat is already there. So seconds later, just like when I broke that timeline down to you, it is ignition at a thousand degrees. And now they're all starting to go. So in some cases, it's best to get out. And that's where Chief Langford...
Really?
Yeah.
So you don't have time to throw it out the window?
No, no, it's best to get out of the structure. 'Cause whatever's happening, the normal, uh, citizen in Calver County is not gonna stop that.
Is there any warning signs?
That's what I'm saying, it's heat. If you touch it, you're like, that's hot. But once you have that pop, that hiss, that discharge of that white, again, it's smoke, but again, I wanna emphasize that it's flammable gas and toxic gas that is coming out. So it's already there, it's just looking for that ignition. And when it lights, it's very, very violent. There's not much...
Things blow out of it.
A hundred percent. It will actually throw batteries, will actually, so the vehicles, not to get, 'cause I know time is very precious, I wanna be on, uh, be respectful of that with you today. But they actually pack them in a, um, an epoxy material on the vehicle so they can take a little bit more of that insult. a little bit more of that insult. But when it explodes, it will actually discharge those like shrapnel, but they're a thousand degrees. So, now they're going under the cars, they're hitting other combustibles. And now you think you're dealing with one vehicle, but now you have all these other things that are igniting as well. So, again, my, my focus for, for a risk management standpoint, wouldn't necessarily be the energy storage systems. I think it would be more the, the consumer based in a multi occupied dwelling, an apartment building, uh, our townhouses that are all from the north to the south in the county, those things can be becoming very difficult.
And warmth is about the only sign. So, if you're grabbing your phone or something.
That's correct, sir.
You unplug it and it should cool down if working properly.
Right, and that's where that module that I spoke about was integrated in there with a more expensive material. They're actually going to have that on there to disable that, to prevent that incident from occurring, going into thermal runaway. But if I have a cheaper, uh, product, I'm not going to put that module on there and you're not going to know that. Because again, we all, we're all, you know, mindful of our money. If I think I can get it $200 cheaper from overseas or whatever, a hundred percent.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And you may not know, you may think it's a good deal, but you're actually bringing that risk right into your own home.
Wow. How about the grant side to it?
Sir?
The grant side.
As far as?
Do you see more grants coming down the line for this kind of fire rescue disposal?
I was, I, I don't necessarily have an answer to that. We can ask Barbara Warner, who's the grant writer for Public State, if she's seen anything. But I, I do imagine as it becomes more popular, there will be definitely higher priced extinguishing items or ways to mitigate the situation and, uh, that the grants would, if you can justify the need for them, then they will be there.
Okay. And what about the North, North Beach incident? Did we learn anything from that or do we know what the conclusion of that was or?
I'll ask Chief Clark on that. I wasn't responding on that call. I'm just referring to the one.
Introduce yourself. I'm Mike Clark, I'm the Assistant Chief of Huntington Fire Department. Uh, which incident are you talking about?
For the electric vehicle, yes.
It was a lawn maintenance vehicle, I believe, and it was left on charge over, so it's just a, uh, overcharged vehicle. It did spark a, you know, fire at the Milwaukee Avenue storage facility.
Okay.
But state fire marshal wasn't investigating further. I do not know anything more than that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Well, I think that, uh, unfortunately, if you thought your work was done, it's not. And I don't think you thought so. But what we would ask is that you continue to work with county staff and whoever you need to bring into that discussion and as you identify issues, things that we can help you with, that we're here to do that. Um, you know, communications, signage, whatever, whatever you all identify, we want to make sure our staff's on board to help you and we'll work you through that. And, uh, I just want to remind the public that's out here watching, uh, Chief Langford and Mr. Farrell and, uh, Mr. Parks in his private life, when he's not working for us, are all volunteers. And the presentation that you just watched was put on by our volunteers. And, um, it's why we have such an outstanding volunteer fire service in Calvert County, because I would challenge our staff, you know, that they would put on, you know, a presentation at this level. So, I want to thank you gentlemen for what you do for our citizens every day. And, uh, Chief Clark, who didn't have a lot to say, he was sitting back there. Um, but, uh, yeah. But, uh, this isn't done, so we'll continue and look forward to, uh, anything we can help and assist you with. But once again, thank you for.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Commissioners, as they're packing up, Mark West County Administrator, Mary Beth Cook, Director of Planning and Zoning is in the room. And one of the reasons that she's here is that when they started putting solar panels on roofs and firefighters had to fight, had to cut their, their way into the building, that prompted us to look at what inspections and that we would use, but also here just to learn what they had to say about what we can help them with going forward.
Right, because these chargers that people are installing for their cars are, uh, not just your everyday battery charger.
Like you were saying this morning, they don't know. They don't tell you that at the dealership that, or, or, or when the guy's coming to say, this is good for the environment, it's going to save you money, you're doing your part to help.
So, we've, we've got to make sure our codes are in place to make sure they're installed properly. And I know people hate rules and regulations, but we're trying to save your life. So, um.
Well, I'm even thinking about what's in our garage, you know?
Makes you think, absolutely.
Because those battery packs are like this for the wreathers and chainsaw and all of that.
Riding lawnmowers now, electric, so, you know, we're not trying to discourage the use of electrics, but there are steps we need to take to make sure everybody's safe. So, before I even got to you, the next item on the agenda is Old Business Office, County Administrator and Comcast build out. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Always prepared.
Yes, you are.
Good morning, Commissioners, Linda Fissala, Deputy County Administrator, Ashley Staples Reed, she's our Special Projects Program Manager and the current project lead for this. And Chris Comer, you want to introduce yourself?
Chris Comer, I'm the Director of Government Affairs for Comcast.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Nice to meet everyone.
Nice to meet you.
Good morning. So, I'll go ahead and I'll read the memo and then we'll get right into the presentation. So, for background, in August of 2021, the Board of County Commissioners temporarily removed the customer contribution requirement between the customer and Comcast to any resident in Calvert County beyond the 300 foot requirement, which is outlined by the 2018 Comcast franchise agreement. In November of 2021, the B O C C voted to reimburse customer contributions made by the Calvert County residents who paid for Comcast service extension between Jan. 1 and December 31st of 2021. Staff has since worked with Comcast to determine the homes that are in need of connection in an effort to achieve the Commissioners' build out initiative. So, discussion is staff will provide a presentation on progress to date, an updated timeline on the completion of the current phase of the Comcast build out project, and we will review associated costs, fiscal impacts. For FY '22, we have phases one and two. Uh, we have a 1.476, which was funded by Comcast and a state grant. Um, and then customer reimbursements, that was paid out of ARPA funding, that was $29,282.65. And then for FY '23, we have phase three, which is what we're going to be predominantly focusing on today's presentation with an estimated build out costs that are currently sitting at 2.63 million. Following the completion of phase three, staff will return to demonstrate the full account of all funds associated with this project. So, conclusion recommendation, staff requests that the B O C C approve and authorize the Board President, President to sign the grant dis, uh, dispersment agreement for the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development FY '21 broadband infrastructure grant program on behalf of the Board to close out phases two of the county's build out, build out initiative, which we'll discuss as well in the presentation. Okay, good morning Commissioners, I'm going to take the first couple of slides before I turn it over to Ashley. So, this morning, we're just going to provide a quick update on where we are. And, um, in the end, as Ashley mentioned, we'll get down to the MOU approval. So, for the newer Commissioners and for folks that haven't been following along, um, this progress, our franchise agreement with Comcast was signed a couple of years ago. What they do is provide provision of cable television service for the use of our public right of way. What they don't do is provide broadband or internet service. That's actually a byproduct of the cable service that's being offered. It provides exclusive, exclusive rights to cable television service providers. This does not prevent any other company from petitioning the county for a franchise agreement. This is important because we get these questions a lot. Anybody that wants to provide this service has the ability to petition us to do so. Um, and then finally, it does not allow us to regulate what any cable company charges for cable TV or service. Uh, the franchise agreement I mentioned was, was, uh, a few years ago, it was actually in December of 18. We did institute a 5% franchise fee that reverts back to our county's general fund that will eventually be put back into maintenance and upgrades. The Board approved that. Um, it outlines a density requirement between 15 homes per mile and the length of standard cost re-drop from 125 to 300 feet. I want to stop there because with the presentation update you're going to get today, I just want to remind folks, we're kind of outside of this. Uh, the Commissioners, the last Board made the decision to, um, extend service to all the homes at 125 feet. And then they, then they went beyond that and updated it to anything beyond 300 feet for a certain amount of time to make sure that we had 100% access to broadband, particularly during the pandemic. The franchise agreement also provides a cost sharing formula when densities not prevent, when we are outside of what we are doing right now, it will, it will expire in December of 28. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Ashley. And before I do, I just want to point out, Ashley's, uh, pretty much taken this project over. She's doing a fantastic job, so she will do a better job at updating you on where we are with the status of the project. All right, so, um, I do want to back up, um, with this timeline to go back to spring of 2021, just again, for the new Commissioners as well as, um, individuals who are just now tuning into what we're doing with this Comcast, Comcast build out. So, in the spring of 2021, Comcast was awarded funds via the FY '21 infrastructure grant, um, to help aid in funding phases one and two, uh, which we'll go a little bit more into detail to where exactly that is in the county. And then in April of 2021, the Board of County Commissioners approved full build out up to 300 feet from the right of way per the franchise agreement, which Linda was just referring to. Um, later on that year in August, the Commissioners temporarily removed that 300 feet limitation. This is going to enable all Comcast, um, service to anybody who essentially wanted to sign up for the service, um, and they'll have no charge. Um, so right now, well, prior to that, they were responsible for that charge beyond 300 feet. And what the Commissioners did in that August action was to eliminate that. In November of 2021, the Commissioners approved to reimburse constituents between that Jan. 1 to December 31st timeframe of 2021, who had made contributions beyond that 300 mark. Um, and that has been satisfied. And then in August of 2022, uh, we allocated additional American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds for phase three. Um, and then in September of 2022, phases one and two were complete, which we will discuss in an upcoming slide. Um, October of 2022, we signed an agreement with Comcast to complete phase three. And October, same time, we began surveying, designing and formulating a construction schedule with Comcast. And then, um, happy to announce this, well, last month now, April, Comcast was awarded funds via the FY '23 infrastructure grant to help aid in building out some of, uh, the homes in, in phase three.
Phase three is the final phase, correct?
Yes, that is our intention. Um, so funding franchise fee money was originally budgeted.
Thank you.
For FY '22 to complete the full build out, however, with ARPA, um, funds coming down as well as state grants, um, it helped, it helps continue to fund this initiative without having to utilize, uh, the franchise fee. It doesn't mean that we may not need to, but it's, that's going to be at the, the last resort.
So, to date, we've not expended any county funds yet?
Correct. Only grant funding through ARPA and then through the state grants that Comcast has applied on our behalf.
But when we made this decision, that was, we weren't.
Correct.
At that time, we had committed up to $3 million. And at that time, we thought it was only 300 houses and we, we're now, where are we at, 600 and some houses?
Uh, so for phase three, we're at 450 with needing to evaluate an additional 50 to 75 homes.
Yeah, so.
And you know, what was strange is there was no predicting, obviously COVID, it was just that having internet available was like saying you didn't have an oven in your house. I mean, and we are a rural area, so, you know, when we made that decision, hey, let's try to do everything we can to get door to door, there was no funding out there or anything like that. And it was just felt that's what we had to have. And then all this came about and then they tried to bump our place in line and we're like, hey, wait a minute, you know? Uh-uh, we was here before the free money was here, you know, our, you know, our people have made that commitment. So, um, I'm glad to see, how far are we away from?
End of the year. So, uh, Comcast Construction leads estimate the end of the year.
By the end of this year?
Correct.
Wow, that's a whole lot of right of ways.
I want to hear you say end of year. I don't want to say end of year, end of 2023.
What the projection is right now is the end of 2023.
Because the end of the year never comes.
Well, and you know, that's a lot of right of ways. People don't understand it's not so simple because, and I'm going to misspeak, um, besides private residents, there's also some other utility lines we had to get permission from.
Correct.
So, I mean, it was not just as simple knocking on the door and saying, excuse me, sir, can we stay? So, there's a lot of hustling and a lot of work.
Yes, there is. And we'll, we'll touch on the complexities of it as well, too, because it does vary from home to home.
And, and that will be the kind of the variable, the wild card in all of this is how quickly we can get the necessary easements, uh, in, in order to extend service.
I'm impressed, though, I really am. I mean, this was not an easy project and.
Commissioners, I, I do, I do want to point out that the Board, uh, took a pretty lot, pretty big leap in getting this done. I think we were the first in the state to go to 100% coverage and Comcast was very helpful in doing so, but that, that was kind of out of the box. So, we've, we've, we've come a long way from when we started this project.
No, I, I would echo that as well. Calvert County's been at the forefront of, of tackling this last mile issue. Um, I, I remember meeting with some of the Commissioners, Mike included, early on, uh, in the pandemic and trying to figure out how, how can we, how, how can we navigate this? How can we make it happen? And having the foresight to realize that, you know, it's an economic development issue, it's an education issue, but there's benefits that come with, as you said, taking cars off the road that don't have to travel out of the county. They can stay here in the county and, and work from home. If, if, if other businesses can do that, if students can do that and being prepared for the next pandemic. So, you know, really, really, to your, you know, the county's credit, uh, there's a reason that, that you're at, at the front of the line and, and, and doing as much that has been accomplished and while, while other counties are, are still trying to figure it out or, or probably lagging, uh, you know, a year or two behind easily.
Well, you remember the solution was, well, people just go to community center, just go to library. COVID said you can't. So, what do these students do? You know, I mean, that was, so, yeah, it was.
By, by making that commitment, by being creative and looking at, all right, can we use the franchise fees? Without, for anyone, it was the thought that there would be federal funds coming down the pipeline, looking at, at what could, what could the county do using their existing fees? And I, I believe we pay around a million dollars a year in franchise fees to the county. How, how can we use those fees and, and, and find a way to solve the problem? And then we were fortunate to, with the state grants, uh, to, and, and additional funding to, to, to find ways to, to do this with, with hopefully, uh, less pressure on the county's general funds.
And hopefully, long term, and probably there's some people that don't want to hear this, but we have a potential to eliminate snow days. Because, you know, think of what it costs to have snow days and to get to a point where COVID was a blueprint of how to educate at home. If you don't have to have snow days anymore, you know?
I, I won't tell my kids that.
Oh, I know, I know. It's not very popular with the kids and all, but you know, where everybody has a laptop and everybody has this, you know, there ought to be a streamlined process in the future that the school system can say, okay, we're on this program because there's no school and you can keep everybody safe. You don't have to have the buses on the road, you don't have to rearrange schedules. I know I'm opening up some emails here, but.
We, we've eliminated snow days for county employees.
But, but, but it's true, there's, I mean, I, I, I know during, you know, some of the worst snowstorms, I'm at home still working.
Right, and the show keeps going.
Don't skip a beat.
Mr. Cox, do you have a question?
So, can you work, walk me through the process on phase three? So, we got state funded at 942, we got, uh, the ARPA three, four. You just made a comment on franchise fees, a million something. So, that still is not up to that 6.2. So, can you explain what's going to happen there?
Yeah, so, um, for phase three, to recap, state funding is that, that 942, that was what was awarded last month. We have 3.4 earmarked from ARPA funds. County contributions are to be determined based on what the MOU is. So, the MOU that we have with Comcast that we signed in October has a rough estimate of that 6 million. Um, so it is subject to change, up or down. Um, and so it, it is kind of a, a question mark of how much franchise fees we are going to use. And then if we do need to come back to you guys to request general fund use, we would certainly do that before we would make any action. But that's hopefully not anticipated.
Okay.
All right, so, uh, to recap phases one and two, and just to reiterate, this, this is already completed. This was completed in September of 2022. Um, so build out provided connection to 325 homes across the county, so all the way from the north end to the south end. Um, so with all the projects and phases one and two, Comcast is in need of that final agreement. So, now that the numbers are finally backed, the homes are all quote unquote released, meaning completed, um, they're going, they wanted to come back and sign that MOU with the final numbers. So, that is what we are asking for signature today. So that is what we are asking for signature today. And then we have a chart there that does a breakdown of all the homes served and to what areas. So Phase One is your Barstow area, and so that alone was 161 homes that was released. And then your Phase Two are going to be all the, the previous line items in that chart as well. So again, north end of the county to the south end of the county, as far as smaller projects go. Any questions?
And they were the projects that were determined to be the easiest and quickest to get done.
Not necessarily, but yes. I mean, Barstow was a very complex project, but it was incorporated into the grant that Comcast submitted.
But it was determined to do that, you get the biggest bang for your time investment.
Absolutely.
Just many dollars as fast as possible.
Right.
Absolutely.
And, and just kind of backing up, you know, the, the challenge in, in identifying unserved homes is, we, we know where our network is, but we don't always know where it's not. And, and so we worked with the county as part of the franchise renewal process, taking our maps and overlaying them with, with the county's maps to identify these homes. And, and these were the ones that we, that it was obvious that, that didn't have service. But, but the, the other homes, you know, that have kind of come forward since then have, have just been customers that self-identify, saying, I don't have access. And then we drill down and take a closer look at those.
And we still have some people that say, I don't want it.
That's correct.
We still have.
Yes.
That's okay, but the good thing is that it's there. And if they ever go to resell their home, can you imagine trying to sell a home in today's world and say, you don't have internet? I mean, you see it on the other side of your business. People aren't watching cable, so to speak, anymore. Everything's streamed, you know? I mean, so that's, you're watching this in front, right in front of us where technology's changing to everything is internet.
No, I think that we're still going to have a few homes out there that it's not run to.
That's correct.
Because the people didn't say. So there may still be resales out there that do not have Comcast to the door because whoever those residents are today said, no, I don't want it. Even if it's free, I don't want it. But we've done everything we can to get that to them.
Correct.
There are going to be situations in the future where somebody's going to have to pay to get it run to their door because the previous owner said, for whatever reason.
Correct.
So there are going to be a few of those situations still out there, but we've done our best.
No, you're, you're, you're right. Again, right now, if, if someone's out there and they're not sure, even if they don't want service, there's no commitment to sign up for service at this time. But having, having the connection there, so in the future.
It's just silly not to. I mean, like I say, because, and you're absolutely right, you go to buy the house and the guy's going to go, what? And if that ship has sailed.
I think that ship has sailed.
You say it's going to be harder to sell the house, or?
It's getting right on a tie anyway.
And Commissioners, just to reiterate that, we have generated a letter that's going to go to the individuals who refuse connection.
One last time?
One last time, encouraging them, you know, pass beyond this date if you choose to continue to refuse service, you will be financially responsible at a later date if you do change your mind.
And I think that that, we've got to make that decision that.
That is a request for today as well.
This door has got to close, that, you know, we're not going to leave it open forever.
Yeah, yeah, it can't be held hostage with that.
Ship still tied to the dock, but the rope's getting loose, I think.
So just to recap what we're doing now in Phase Three. So we've identified 415 homes that need connection via social media outreach. We are still getting a couple of people trickling in that still want connection that we didn't previously identified. So we are in constant contact with Comcast Construction crews in regards to who needs to be added. So the projected construction schedule for 2023 calendar year has been established for 335 of those homes. So we still have a couple of homes that we need to incorporate into the schedule, and Comcast Construction crews are confident that they can work it into the 2023 schedule. Citizens can visit the website to confirm their status, so, which we'll go over in a couple of slides in regards to the extension map. And then, again, citizens who refuse will be notified via a letter from us indicating that they do have X amount, I think it's three weeks that we've determined, to change their minds ultimately. And if not, they will be financially responsible if they choose to, at a later date, get connection. So just to recap, for new Commissioners as well as the citizens, so the construction process for any home does vary, but there is a, a streamline of essentially what's happening. So first up, you have the project that's identified. So a citizen will reach out to us or even Comcast and say that my home needs connection. Once that's established, Comcast will actually survey the area, and then they'll determine what type of line work, whether it's aerial on utility poles, or if it needs to be underground, and then in what direction it'll go through as far as yard. And then that'll prompt a design. And then from that design, an invoice will be generated, and at that point, the county would pay for that invoice. But beyond that, easements and permits are obtained. That's where the hiccup is, and that's what varies from, from job to job. So some addresses don't need anything. They don't need permits, they don't need easements. Some addresses need everything. You know, they'll need an easement from one of their neighbors, they'll need a state highway permit, they'll need a county permit.
And that's what creates sometimes a huge hiccup, because we have had individuals say, no, you ain't crossing my property.
Yes.
And, and, and sometimes, if, if, if that's homeowner doesn't want it, then that's one thing, but the challenge is if you need to, to get past that property to serve someone else.
If I don't like you and you're past me, and I'm, I'm, no. So, you know, for people to say it's, you know, it's not our, and what's the holdup? And we've had individuals say, well, I'll let you cross, but I want this, you know? And we work through those issues, but there are situations where a property owner just says, no. And we're kind of stuck if we can't figure out a workaround.
And we have generated a letter for the easement company that Comcast uses, Americom, to incorporate into their packet when they do request an easement. And it's really just highlighting the importance of granting an easement. But yes, that is one of the major hiccups. But once you reach those hurdles, you can begin construction, and then the project is completed, and then the project is released. And released essentially just means that Construction crews have done, they've laid the line and established connection, basically letting serviceability know that that home is now serviceable, and the citizen can call and schedule a technician appointment. So going into the website, so how do I find information or updates? So you can go onto the Calver County's website, this is the, an image of the front landing page, you would go to Comcast Build Out, which is in your upper right-hand corner, and then it's going to navigate you to this landing page. You can do a couple of different things here, once you're on this page. You can submit a question. So if you just have a general question about the status of your home, you can submit a question. If you have not previously requested to be added to the list, you can put in a request to add your address to the Comcast Build Out. I really encourage individuals to view the extension map prior to doing that, just to ensure that they are in fact not already identified. That way, we're not getting duplicate submissions. And then we do have sign-ups, and we do have a little blurb about the Comcast Affordable Connectivity Program. Chris, I don't know if you want to highlight anything on that?
No, just a reminder that for low to moderate income residents, there's still an opportunity to take advantage of the Affordable Connectivity Program. Provides a $30 broadband subsidy to, to help support service. The State of Maryland has a temporary assistance fund as well for an additional $15, so that, you know, it's, it's a temporary fund, but, but funds should be still available for the next year to take advantage of.
I think some people have felt frustrated because when we started this project two or three years ago, like I said, originally, we only had like 300 houses, and some of those people that signed up from the very get-go have gotten pushed because more houses have come in, and we've tried to evaluate and do those that are easiest first, and those people feel like they got pushed to the back of the line and they were the first to sign up, and that's unfortunate.
It was certainly an influx.
But we're trying to do our best to get everybody hooked up as quickly as we can. I apologize to those individuals that thought they were going to have service at the end of last year, that it's been another year, so.
So moving forward to the Comcast Service Extension Map. So it's an interactive tool that we've actually got up and running with help from our Technology Services Department. So definite kudos for our GIS team. But essentially, what we can do here is you can pinpoint your exact address, and if there's a corresponding dot on your address, you can see where you're at as far as this construction timeline. So we do have a ledger there that explains what color-coded dot means. So you have your green for complete, you have your red for identified but no further information is provided at this time. You have your yellow for in progress. Your in progress is going to be that timeframe from surveying to construction, in which case you can expand by clicking your dot that's associated with your address. And you're going to get a little blurb that indicates the status, where we're at, and then the projected completion timeframe. So, and we are doing our construction schedule by quarter. So currently, we're in quarter two. So we have quarter two, three, and four for the remainder of the calendar year. And I will take it back to Linda for requested actions.
Thank you, Ashley. So Commissioners, two, two requested actions this morning. One is to approve the MOU for the grant disbursement agreement. This closes out with Phases One and Two and is a requirement to move forward, so I'm asking your support on that. And then the second action is to set a cutoff date for June 30th for signup for free service. This program was extended back in August of 21 to go beyond 300 feet at no cost to your constituents. However, we're at a point where we're going to be halfway through the project completion year, and we want to make sure that we're going to hit that mark. And we'll do some aggressive additional outreach to make sure folks know that their time is coming to a close, but we do need to set a cutoff date.
Mr. President, do you want that in the motion? Yes, sir.
Mr. Preston, I make a motion that we approve and authorize the Board President to sign the Grant Distribution Agreement for the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development FY21 Broadband Infrastructure Grant Program on behalf of the Board to close out Phase One, One and Two of the county's build-out initiative, and also to approve a cutoff date of June 30, 2023, for the final date for citizens to request a free connection.
So I have a motion, the second that we approve and authorize the Board President to sign the Grant Disbursement Agreement for the Broadband Infrastructure Grant Program to close out Phases One and Two of the county's build-out initiative, and that we close signup, the signup period on June 30th of 2023. Any discussion on that motion?
No.
Hearing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Chris, thank you.
Thank you.
Just to reiterate, this board has not given Comcast exclusive cable rights to Calver County. Chris, do you have any idea how much money Comcast has invested in infrastructure in Calver County? Just top of your head?
I, when, when I started in, in 2000, if you, if you think, if, if you think back that far, you know, at the time, we were offering 30 channels. It was Jones Cable when we acquired it, we were offering 30 channels. CNBC was a part-time channel because there wasn't enough bandwidth on the network to, to carry as many channels as needed. Video on demand wasn't an option, HD technology hadn't, hadn't been rolled out. Internet, when I, you know, we weren't even offering internet in 2000, which I'm getting old, but it wasn't that long ago, when you, when you stop and think about how much things have changed.
Still dial-up out there.
Yeah. So going back to just in two, in, in the year 2000 alone, we invested $17 million just in the network, and we continue to invest in the network to, to this day. You know, we're, we're working to expand, you know, faster and faster internet services. And that's something that will just continue to, to be scalable as the future demands.
Right. The issue is that another cable company's not going to come in and put down millions and millions of dollars for infrastructure to compete for the customer base that we have in Calver County.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure how many miles of road the county has, but it cost us on, you know, around $140,000 per mile to, to build out our network.
And that's the issue. And I tell everybody, until it's wireless, nobody else is going to come in and invest that kind of money to compete for the customer base that we have. It's just, it's just, it's not there.
But, but I will say, we, you know, it, broadband and the industry, you know, continues to evolve and change. We're seeing more and more competition throughout the marketplace, whether it's wireless or even wired providers. So it, I, I, you, I would never say never, that.
I don't say never.
But I, but it, it continues to be very robust, but it's, it's a very capital-intensive investment, and when you think of having to sink millions of dollars in the ground just to let it sit for years before you begin to recoup it, it's, it's, it's a hefty investment.
Also, I went back to people aren't watching the regular cable, it's just internet. They're, they're paying that to Disney and to all these others, so that's just direct to those companies. So I, for a company, just speaking as a business, why would I? You know, I can't recoup my money, you know, the return on investment. I mean, I'm not going to put millions of dollars in a place with 90,000 residents, 33,000 homes. I mean, I only have 33,000 opportunities to try to get back millions, so.
Had the comment just this week, why won't you let somebody else in here? We ain't stopping nobody.
I fielded that on Facebook, a minimum of twice a year, a, a huge three-day weekend of, we just handed out this exclusive rights thing, and it's just not the truth.
No, I, I.
Unfortunately, we're stuck with Comcast.
No, I could do it.
I could do it.
But I talked to my friends in other areas that have Armstrong, Cox, and they're all complaining their rates, and their rates are no different than theirs. Everybody thinks that, you know, look, I paid $200 a month, I think. And my friends in Cecil County with Armstrong are paying the same thing, and people with Cox and, they're all paying the same thing. So it's a fallacy to think that just because we have competition, rates are going to drop in half, because I don't see that in other areas, so.
Well, look at Coke and Pepsi. Coke's say $5 this week, and Pepsi's six, and then next week, I mean, it's, it's just how the market is, so.
Maybe one day.
But I, I will say, I, you know, today, we see more and more competition every day, and it, and it continues to change.
My rate hasn't dropped. We'll give my wife your phone number.
I'd, I'd be happy to.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We'll be very happy when the end of the year comes and this is all done.
At the end of 23. No, it's been, it's been quite a process.
I don't say end of 23.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, you have a great day.
Thank you.
So Mr. County Attorney, I believe that brings us to a public comment.
Thank you, sir. The Board of County Commissioners adopted in 1989 a resolution intending to maintain the order and decorum of the governmental process. A copy of that is found here to my right. And the Ethics Commission has asked that we remind speakers of public comment that lobbyists include those who seek to influence public policy, and lobbyists are required to register in advance. Floor has been open for public comment from persons in the meeting room, who may begin making their way to the microphone, than those joining virtually. All speakers must identify themselves, and whether speaking as an individual, will you be allocated two minutes, or as the designated representative of a group, will you be allocated five? Those attending virtually may press star nine or use the raise your hand function, you'll be identified by either the last four digits of your phone number or your screen name.
I'm sorry, just that last part, I guess we can cut now, is that all right?
The microphone.
Use the microphone. So if you please identify yourself and whether speaking as an individual or the designated representative of a group.
Take your time. Don't rush, take your time.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Yes. I think so.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Beth Bubser, and I live in Dunkirk. I'm speaking on behalf of concerned citizens of Calver County.
Oh, wait a minute, Ms. Bubser, hold on. Maybe it's not on. I'm sorry.
As long as it's not warm.
There we go.
John was paying attention.
I'm sorry.
Yes, we'll, we'll start over.
Start over?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Beth Bubser, and I live in Dunkirk. I'm speaking on behalf of concerned citizens of Calver County. I'm here today to talk about how our Calver County libraries categorize and shelf books for public access, particular for ages infants up to 18 years old. Over the past years, I have noticed a change in how books are being shelved. How do they shelf books, and who oversees their work? I have examples of books that have been inconsistently shelved, which have caused me to be left with one or two possible conclusions. Either our public education has been declining to the point where picture books need to be shelved in the juvenile section, or there's an effort to make certain books accessible to the public, while others, not so much. I brought some samples. Exhibit A, the first book, Who Was Born This Special Day? This is a story of someone being born on this magical day after all the animals in the manger answer that they were not born that night, but a special child. This book is shelved in the juvenile section. Beautifully illustrated, gorgeous pictures with very little words. This book clearly belongs in the picture book section. Target audiences are infants up to five years old. Some of you are probably asking, what is a picture book? A picture book is a story intended for the youngest of readers in which the illustrations and the text work together to tell the story. Picture books are usually read to children, not by children. They are meant for children who are not yet able to read and help them develop a sense of storytelling, plot, and language recognition. Picture books' target audiences are infants up to five-year-olds. Juvenile books are shelved with the young adult books and adult books in the Fairview Library. This should give you an idea of the target audience. The next book, exhibit, Light the Candles: A Hanukkah Lift the Flat Book. The book is about Hanukkah and the many fun things to do to celebrate this joyful holiday. This book is shelved in the juvenile section. Seriously, it's a flat book. This is definitely a preschool book and belongs in the picture book section. Exhibit C, the third book, The Night Before Christmas, a festive holiday classic book. The Night Before Christmas is an enchanting Christmas story that has brought Santa Claus to life for generations. There are three versions of the book shelved in the juvenile section at the same library. How many 10- and 13-year-olds are going to check this book out? This is a preschool book. It should be shelved with the picture books. Beautiful pictures, and again, with limited words. The fourth book, Our Children Can, Our Children Can Soar. This story highlights key figures in the African-American fight for equality, from George Washington Carver to Jackie Robinson, from Rosa Parks to Barack Obama. True pioneers of change. Under the foreword, it reads, quote, "As families read this book together, I hope parents and grandparents will share their own memories about the people in their family trees who stood strong and laid the foundations for the generations that followed them," end quote. Stunning picture books with gorgeous illustrations, again, with limited words. Why is this book shelved in the juvenile section instead with the picture books? Exhibit E, another book, Stealing Home: Jackie Robinson Against the Odds. This is a story of Jackie Robinson, a baseball player, who not only did the unbelievable steal home in a World Series game, but also what no one thought possible, which was cross the color line of Major League Baseball. Why is this book shelved in the juvenile section? This book clearly should be shelved with the picture books. Most boys start playing baseball at ages four and five and are looking for role models. Do you, do you remember ever asking a child what they want to be when they grow up? After reading this book aloud to your son or grandson, the response will be, I want to be Jackie Robinson when I grow up. The placement of this book does not make sense. Exhibit F, another book, the last book, De Colors, Bright With Colors. This is a great multicultural book. De Colors, Bright With Colors is sung all over the Spanish-speaking world. People joyfully grab hands, sway, and sing the words that celebrate the beautiful, the beauty of spring and the strength of love. The book goes through the words of the song in English and in Spanish. The book is shelved in the juvenile section. More fitting to be shelved with the picture books. The pictures are beautiful with many bright colors throughout the book. It's just an adorable picture book. These are just a few examples of the many books that are mis-shelved in the Calvert County libraries. How do we determine if these books are being mis-shelved? Are the placement of the book necessary because our public school students have fallen so far behind in their reading abilities? There was a time most juveniles would not want to be seen with a picture book if for no reason other than the perception these books are for babies. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the room who wishes to provide public comment?
Yes.
Hi there. Good morning. My name is Mary Barker, and I've lived in Calvert County for over 30 years. I too am here today as a concerned citizen of Calvert County. Mrs. Bubser has defined the terms picture book and juvenile. The juvenile description is a target audience technically anyone between 0 to 18. It's categorized on the books as a J, and then E is easy for an audience of 0 to 5. So the examples that I want to show start with this book here. As you can see, these are the exact same book. One is categorized in the easy section. The other is categorized in the juvenile section. And to me, this looks like a picture book. You may agree. Lots of beautiful pictures. The subject matter does touch on a socially controversial issue, and that is a boy that dresses up as a girl. The boy is dressing up at birthday parties, going to school. And so perhaps that's why the library put one of the books in the juvenile section. Moving on to another socially controversial issue is the preferred use of pronouns. So that's displayed in this book, which made it into the easy category. The story is about a single entity, a single protagonist that identifies as their, then moves to my in the pronoun, and then moves to their. You know, again, just a socially controversial subject, and certainly grammatically confusing, I would think, for a young child. And the final example I have is these books, which are pretty much identical. They're not identical, but very, very similar. When asked why this book was shelved in juvenile as opposed to this book shelved in easy, it was said that this book was poetry. They both are poetry in their nature. The difference I noticed is that the protagonist's nuclear family in this book is of a man and a woman. And this book has several different nuclear families, consisting of a man and a woman, a man and a man, a woman and a woman. Same book.
Please wrap up your comments.
But easy section, juvenile section. So I'm left confused or possibly concerned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, we'll, we'll take care of it. Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning.
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 Wait, squeezing up, right?
Yes.
I passed the test. Good morning. Lynn Robinson from Owings, speaking as an individual. Wanted to call your attention again to the ongoing running hair issue. Two quick things. One, I wanted to publicly thank Commissioner Cox. Last time, you said you had taken the time to meet personally with the owners of Running Hair to try to resolve the ongoing issue. And I just wanted to publicly say thank you. And to any of you who have taken a moment to learn about this situation or get involved, thank you. And number two is I just want to keep the drumbeat going. The weeks pass, the employees have uncertain futures, the business remains closed. And I just want to encourage everyone to help find solutions, to expedite them. So quickly, thank you. Appreciate your help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Carol Wilson. I live in North Beach. I'm here speaking as an individual. I've lived in Calvert County for 40 years, 40, not four. I too am here to speak about running hair and to ask you, you know, if there's any way that you can expedite the process or find a way to allow them to open while you're working on resolving the issues that you, that are ongoing with them. From my just personal perspective about running hair, like I said, I'm here as an individual. I'm, or as a customers would be my connection there. From my personal perspective, though, I have a son, daughter-in-law, and two granddaughters that live in Anorondle County. They live in Severna Park. And they think Calvert County is boring. They don't want to come here. If we want to get together as a family, you know, even North Beach, which I think is a blast, but they think it's boring. But the one thing in Calvert County that we have, that they will come down here for and that we can all enjoy as a family, is Running Hair Vineyard. The girls can, we put our blanket on the grass by the fence, and the girls can play with their grandparents. Mom and dad can listen to live music and chill out. And it's one nice, relaxing family thing that we have been able to find as a family that we can do together in Calvert County. So just from my personal selfish perspective about not wanting to lose time with my precious granddaughters, I would just like to ask if there's, that, you know, you continue to hope that you can find a path for them to stay open while you're resolving the issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Alana Van Outdorn, also from North Beach. A little different for me. I'm new to, to the county and coming on six years. And so for me to go out and find out what's going on and find, find Running Hair and enjoy it, and then to, and then, I understand, newly COVID, but then to find out what's going on now, I would ask that both sides come to the table. Let's try to find a way to keep the business open, to keep people employed, and just have something fun to do in the county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And there are no speakers online.
Thank you. So that brings us to Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Cox.
Thank you, Mr. President. I attended the Southern Maryland Firemen's Association Memorial Service this weekend. Also attended the Southern Maryland Volunteer Firemen's Association Convention Meeting, which was long, but they got it through. And on Sunday, although it was pouring down rain, I attended the fireman's parade on Main Street, and it was very well-attended. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Earl.
On the 25th, I attended a meeting of Company Three Referenceitive Replacement, trying to work with them through that process. I also was at the memorial service as well as the meeting and convention for the Southern Maryland Firemen's Association. It was quite lengthy. The only other thing I want to bring is concerned ladder safety. Just be careful doing projects around your house. We recently had a friend fall, and he's in bad shape. He's very lucky. But, I mean, you can wake up in the morning, find the world's yours, and by the middle of the day, you could be facing paralysis. He was very fortunate and he's not. But just be careful doing projects around the home. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Grassup?
On Friday, I went to St. Leonard Volunteer Fire Department, and I had dinner with them. I rode in a fire truck, spent a good three and a half hours there, and was very welcomed, learned a lot about our volunteers within our fire departments. It was very productive. They're going to have a home that is going to be burned, and I'm going to go to that.
Oh, cool.
Expanding my horizons. Okay. Again, I also attended the memorial for the fallen firefighters at Calvert High School and the meeting at Prince Frederick Volunteer Fire Department. And we had a nice, nice meal there. It was nice, Ben.
Thank you. Commissioner Hart?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I will also, to look with my fellow commissioners, was there Saturday night. I want to congratulate Pat Hassler. He's been a wealth of information for me since my career as Commissioner. And I'll admit it again, we had a presentation, and I didn't know what a ladder truck did specifically, which I get reminded quite a bit. I thought I was doing my job, and I went through the information. I looked how old it was, and how many miles it did, and all that. And I said to the guy, I said, well, what does it do? He says, it carries ladders. I said, well, get a U-Haul.
Oh, wow.
So I have heard about that for years, and the, and those guys have said, hey, come here. Let's start educating you here. And Pat Hassler's definitely, definitely helped me over time. It's well-deserved. Congratulations to him. I also want to say thank you to the men and women, Calvert County Sheriff's Office, at the bank robbery. And our men and women, don't quit. You commit a crime here, you will get caught. They have proven it time and time and time again. They put their lives in danger. It's not just an expression. We've seen it with Officer Flint, who was shot. Thank God, he's going to be okay after it's going to be a long rehabilitation process. But they do this every day, willing to do this every day. And I just can't thank them enough. So that, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. So last Tuesday afternoon, we dedicated the oak tree that we planted out front thanks to the generous donation of Mrs. Oberg, and hope that that grows to be as large as the one that it replaced. And Thursday night, I attended a tri-county council meeting where I was presented three different checks totaling $55,000 for various grants that the county has received. So I want to thank our employees for taking the extra effort to apply for those grants that help reduce the cost to county government and provide services to our county citizens. So I too, on Saturday, attended the memorial service for fallen firefighters and the preceding, the following dinner. So those of you that aren't aware, this weekend, look, all the Commissioners bring certain perspectives to the Commission when they come. I bring perspective. I spent over 30 years as a volunteer at Prince Frederick, and I am a life member there. And so I, I had more appreciation for the ceremony that occurred over the weekend that I want to thank my fellow Commissioners for coming and attending. It was, we started at 1:00, and I don't think we got done Saturday night until 9:00. So they gave up eight hours of their lives Saturday afternoon for something that, you know, wasn't as familiar to them as it was to me. So I do want to thank them for coming, and the firemen there did appreciate it. But Prince Frederick Volunteer Fire Department hosted the Southern Maryland Volunteer Firemen's Convention over the weekend. Unfortunately, weather didn't cooperate. But the reason they hosted was because, as Commissioner Hart mentioned, Pat Hassler, who is president of Prince Frederick Volunteer Fire Department, was elevated to president of the Southern Maryland Volunteer Firemen's Association, which means you have to host. So they hosted all the activities over that weekend. I didn't hear what the budget was, but they raised a lot of money to host that event. And at that ceremony on Saturday night, John Hassler, a founding member of Company Seven in St. Leonard's, and Timmy Delahanty, a member of Prince Frederick, were inducted into the Southern Maryland Hall of Fame, which meant they've contributed a significant part of their lives to the volunteer fire service here in Southern Maryland. So we want to congratulate them and also congratulate Pat on being promoted to president of Southern Maryland Volunteer Firemen's Association. I too went on Sunday to the parade, sat in the car and watched through the rain, then went down to the fairgrounds where they have activities and competitions, stayed there until it started raining. I'm sorry, I've turned into a wimp. But my wife doesn't like being out in the rain, so we left when those activities got a little wet.
Didn't Mike Wells get recognized for 50?
Yes. Mike Wells got acknowledged for his 50 years of service. Also recently, Huntington Volunteer Fire Department celebrated their 50th year. So then Mike Wells and his family are founding members of Huntington.
And there's a video online that is quite worth watching in reference to their 50th year anniversary.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. You know, we talk about the fire service. I talk about the fire service. You know, it's, you build relationships in there. And my family was not, my wife wasn't into it like I was. But we have families in this county that are generational in the fire service. They commit all of their free time to serving the citizens of this county through their service. And it's a family. When you spend that much time together, you know, I have, you know, Sunday, I spent more time talking to my old friends there than I did. And I made the comments Saturday night. A lot of those people that are leading the Southern Maryland Association were there when I was active, and I quit being active 20 years ago. But they were all there when I was there, and they're still there. And you notice they're hobbling their way up to the stage, and some of them are in wheelchairs. But they're still committing their lives to the service. So it's, it's quite a thing. I'm sorry, I've talked too long about that. Last night, I had to attend the Anorondle County Council meeting where they, the county, we've heard us once in a while briefly mention the grain elevator in Lothian and how important that is to our farmers in Southern Maryland. And the council last night approved the purchase of that facility. So we're hopeful that we'll have somebody in there operating that for this fall to serve our grain farmers here in Southern Maryland. While I was there, it was interesting watching them because prior to our presentation, they talked about, they appointed their PAB chair. Now, if that's their first one, they are way behind the eight ball. But they were bragging about how progressive they've been in establishing this process. And I thought, eh, not so much. But, but, you know, to each his own. And then later, they had a discussion. But, uh, you know, to each his own. And then later, they had a discussion about special events permits. And apparently, they've been for months going through this process of establishing special events permits, and it was entertaining to hear the comments, because we went through the exact same discussion, uh, and had the same public comments as we had, and I just sat there and grinned. Uh, they did approve it. I think their minimum is five hundred people. If you think you're going to have five hundred people, you have to have a permit, and, but they talked about all the stuff we did. I thought, man, nothing's really changed.
Geography.
Between the different geographies, the issues are exactly the same no matter where you are. And, um, I did, uh, I don't know whether to take it as a compliment or not, but when I got done my presentation, the chair of the board said, "I can tell you're a politician." So I'm kind of taking that as an insult, to be honest.
It's a mixed bag.
But, uh, one of the council, uh, women, they have seven members on their council, five women and two men, poor men. Um, but the one councilwoman, when we got done our presentation, said, "People talk about, you know, does their testimony count, and is it important for them to come out and speak?" And the one councilwoman said that my presentation changed her vote. And she said that because she just wanted to make the point that it is important. And all of you that come out and make public comment at our meetings, and take your time to come out, uh, it is important. We do want to hear. Sometimes you may think we don't, but we do. We do listen to what you say, and we do appreciate when you come out and take your time to voice your concerns. And it does change our vote. Sometimes it does, sometimes it doesn't, but it, it's still important that you do that. So we really do appreciate that. Uh, just once again, I want to extend our condolences to the North Beach Volunteer Fire Department for the loss of Mad Dog. You know, we've talked a lot about Fire Department today, but he was one of those individuals gave his life, and, uh, also raises the issue that take care of yourselves. I don't like going to doctors no more than anybody else. Apparently, Mad Dog had liver cancer and was one of these people that never went to a doctor, and they noticed he was, uh, having some issues, and, uh, two weeks ago, went to the doctor and died two days after he went to the doctor. Um, probably could have been prevented, just never took the time to take care of himself. As most of you know, I went through a little issue myself a few years ago, and, uh, you know, you have to take care of yourself, especially when you get old like me. Um, but, uh, Mad Dog didn't do that, and, uh, unfortunately, uh, you know, had a short fight, and maybe that's the way we're supposed to go. But, uh, want to send our condolences out to his family and the farm, the Fire Department family. It's a loss for them. So, um, when we have those arrangements, we will get those out. And I have rambled on enough, so I'm, I believe I have a motion.
Okay. I move to recess to executive session pursuant to general provisions, Article, Section 3-305 B1I, to discuss the employment, appointment, compensation, and leave of appointees, employees, or officials over whom the board has jurisdiction.
Second.
Have a motion in the second. Then we go into executive session. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. You all have a great day.
Thank you.